I'd like to call the order, the meeting. I'd like to welcome Mark Rushkin. I need an approval for the agenda.
So moved.
Move by. Second by. Move by Mayor Henley, second by Counselor Jones. You all heard the motion. Are there any questions to the motion? If there's no question in the motion, I now bring it to a vote. All those in favor, significantly saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, nay. Motion carried. We have a presentation by Linda Cloney, the Walk and Wheel Oxford.
Thank you. So this is a two-part presentation. I had a little video. We're going to try, hopefully tech works with the video after this. But this is the Walk and Wheel Oxford project that we were working on. It's finally done. We have a final copy and a video. We're excited to share. It's only a few minutes long, so it'd be kind of fun. So we do, I did put the report up online for the public to see. It's under our council agenda packages. So you'll see tonight's presentation here. The full report is online for anyone to review. So just to give you a little briefing about it. The objective of this was to build a walkable and wheelable community, which goes hand in hand with the objectives of creating an active, accessible and safe community. There's three, three defined areas that we were focusing on. Walk and mobility, accessibility and safe, active living. So through the report, it gives details, it gives measurements where, how large our sidewalks should be, some recommendations to make. How our sidewalks need to be wider, some suggestions here and there. So there was a great, a lot of work went into it. There was a lot of people involved. Actually, we had Jimmy was involved. We had Mitch involved. Crystal's been involved. Nick's been involved. I've been involved. We had the accessibility committee involved. There was public participation. The mayor was involved and a few other public members attended for the public consultation. So there's a lot of involvement in this as well as the professionals that put this together. And it was funded as well through the impound program. So I'm going to show the video here in a minute. But in conclusion, this, let's see here. The intent of the report was to provide supportive data that may strengthen proposals for future designs, interventions along with public roads and trails. So the, the purpose of this is to really use this as a tool to going forward thinking. And when we're putting together our roads and sidewalks and other infrastructures as well with our builds for inclusion and, and to make this place more included, right? So with all that, and we're also hoping that this may help us with funding opportunities. We've got the study. We've got proof that we need it. We've got the data. So we're hoping that this could help us with some funding as well. So that being said, I would like to present the video. Thank you, Stan and. Good enough.
The town of Oxford is a small sized community. The long history connected to its waterways, farming and industry. It is now looking along with transparent and vibrant, which race struggles to the edge of town as a stop along the way. However, the town wishes to become more of an active, vibrant destination for everyone. Walking is the top activity that Oxford residents love to be more of. Yet people find the commission and maintenance of roadside and cycling infrastructure make it hard to stay active. The term walkability refers to the idea that a place is designed in a way that supports someone to walk through destinations without needing a car, transit or other mode of transportation. The term wheelability recognizes that many pedestrians use wheel mobility devices and that their needs must be considered within the needs of all pedestrians. Walk and Wheel Oxford is an initiative by the town of Oxford to find out how the town can be more accessible. The report was completed to uncover walk and wheelability assets and challenges in the town and make recommendations to inform future initiatives towards healthy and inclusive active transportation. A public consultation session was held of what is supporting this happening so that Oxford residents could speak to their own perspectives as well as belonging to their friends and family who experience accessibility barriers. This project is the first step towards achieving Oxford's active transportation goals by generating and documenting key information that can support future investment, maintenance and strategic designing. In this study, they looked at two different types of indicators for walk and wheelability. First, we looked at connectivity to services and venues to tell us how far our experiences are coming this course. He also measured many features of pedestrian infrastructure, which tells us about the quality of pedestrian riding features like sidewalk quality and chalk blocks. We found that most services are centralized according to the town and that most residences are within a walk and wheelable distance to these services. Nearly three quarters of residential addresses in Oxford are within a 15-minute walk or wheel to both the grocery store and a pharmacy. Accessible parking is also available within walk and wheelable distance to these services. Oxford also has lots of public green space, including parks, sports fields, military tracks. They gave each sidewalk in Oxford a score to get an idea of the sidewalk conditions. These scores looked at how well maintained the sidewalks were, how level they were, how smooth they were and whether there was anything blocking the path. Our study found that many existing sidewalks are already state of repair with over half a ton of fire and significant maintenance to be welcoming to people with diverse identity disabilities. For the most part, we also found that sidewalks are only located on one side of the road and not both sides. Eighty percent of the streets with sidewalks had been only on the single side and 20% had sidewalks on both sides of the street. So the infrastructure in Oxford is challenging to address. The three major waterways that connect in Oxford require bridges for vehicle input traffic, but it can be difficult to make the path across these bridges fully level with the path of travel. There's also a lot of different types of traffic that use Oxford roads, such as industrial and farming traffic, that may compete with pedestrian or cycles used in the roadways. But despite these challenges, Oxford is well set up to do more walk and wheelable one step at a time. For example, local businesses, facilities and parks can apply for grid funding and for accessibility upgrades and additions. Accessible street parking stalls can be given fresh paint, side aisles and curb ramps to make them more usable for wheelchair users. Existing active transportation assets, such as the trail network, can be better connected and more clearly marked so that more people can use them to get around Oxford more efficiently by walking, wheeling or biking. These trails can also be upgraded by putting more seating, trash cans and washing facilities. It is also recommended that sidewalks and pedestrian crossing infrastructure be repaired following Nova Scotia Building Code and best practices in accessible design. During the winter months, Oxford should continue to build on their existing still removal policies and incorporate more policies to prioritize still removal on sidewalks and accessible parking spots. The recommended way forward will require both short-term and long-term strategies. With the help of available funding sources and the collaboration of residents, the town of Oxford shows great potential to employ creative solutions to improve its public infrastructure and roads to be more accessible age-friendly and impactful.
Thank you, Stina. Great job. I was hoping it would work. So again, so there's some areas, identified some areas we need to work on and we can prioritize those during budget time and go forward. So, and take advantage of some of the fundings that's available as well. That's our presentation. It's finally done. I'm so happy we have something to work with. So, yes.
Excellent report.
There's a lot of partners there.
Yes. Thank you for the video and the report. I'd like to move on. Number four, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
You can just declare them.
Okay, I'll just declare. Are there any errors or omissions? If there's no errors or omissions, I'll declare them as read. We'll move on to number five, 5.1, Public Works Department presented by Linda.
Thank you. So tonight, Nick's unable to be present tonight. So I'm going to present his report. A full copy of the report is available in the council package, which is also available online as well. So I'm just going to mention a few of the highlighted items that I noted here. So they had installed during September, they installed a 100-foot water line on Little River Road. They had to clean all four well chambers out at their wells, as well as electrical repair had to be done at well number four. They had to repair some damaged signs on Boundary Street. So that happened. There was some ditching done on Sunset Avenue. And we actually just had a fire inspection done at the theater, which we passed, which was great news. So anyways, that's all together. So we didn't have too many upgrades had to be done. So it was, it was good. So we're glad to get that done. So we're glad to get that done. So we're ready for the new season. And also a new furnace coming in this week for anyone out there that might've experienced some chilliness. We do have a new furnace that's coming in this week for the theater as well. Some sidewalk patching had been done. And just a special note. While our crew is outside working, just to be very mindful of the areas, you got to follow the traffic laws and you have to slow rate down. So during the installation during the new water line on Little River Road, traffic control reported 16 vehicles not obeying traffic signs or stoplights. So the traffic control is in place to protect our public works team while they complete their tasks and return home to their families safe. So it was eye opening. We're going to put together a post here to help alert the public to be more aware and mindful, you know, of, you know, people are out there, our loved ones are out there. So anyways, to take more care when driving through those scenes that are in urgent need of repair. So anyways, just wanted to put that together.
I thank you, Linda, for that report.
One more number. That's sidewalk. Lot there, perhaps from the ball, so.
Oh, cut the sidewalk.
Her cup was done today, I believe. Yeah. Good.
Good.
Yes.
We'd like to move on to the fire report, 5.2, Bruce Rushkin.
Well, you. Since our last meeting, we responded to nine calls. Two medical calls, three road vehicle collisions, two traffic fires. Doing a standby, another transition. None of those calls are down. Four of them are recovering, area of fire assistance under the permits. We've had a total of 112 calls this year so far. We had the internal training, we had the local social power in, we did a information session on left foot safety and we responded to some of these calls. We completed some post-testing recently and there's 450 TMOs that did not pass. Just tested up to the 300 PSI. Tonight, we have several members heading to wear this for T R train to do releases. There'll be any on online and under. We have, they'll have five in the last week at same train. Four nights, it's a regular training night, so you'll see trucks and some buses are down. Truck, truck two has a knee or bone day. You know, part of that last meeting, you'll be coming next week to see what I do in your care. That should be another one. We notes that 1998, 1999. Maybe 1989 trucks. We're about to try and see if we can get that spec. Not looking. The hot sale on the last, that I'm without. We're trying to turn it down. It's like I said, this is why I'm not believing. We updated the information to the fire writers recently and I just got word back. It's on the new book I had talked about for a minute. We get word back that it's complete. I had a login now that I can not take your information as we go. We've improved our rating from a five to a three B. Should help the rates around here, so.
That's great news.
And it's not recognized any trucks that go over 20, go over 20 years. There's a lot of people that would say so. But leave that in. We had several members off at the school, the government house, the environment department and so on. And we had a very successful meeting to be just for the, this is assess the different calls. Response and they put that in hand, but that new name evening night. This is hard originally. And so I just want to put it there that remind everybody to have your furnace, your wood stove cleaned, your chimney is spayed, cleaned, the, this should be done annually or in four seasons. Didn't need to say. Just want to touch on. If I may, I'm new, new apparatus telling. It should arrive, I'll go on next week to inspect it. It should arrive probably in a month. And this would not be possible since the fourth. The town and staff, the mayor and the council here and just well as our fire fighters association putting on, contributing about $5,000 toward towards this trap. And this wouldn't be possible without the support during the fundraising efforts. And also with the Nova Scotia firefighters 505. So we're very patient.
Question, if I may, you said you've had 116 calls this year. What's an average amount of calls, do you know, off the top of your head?
About 100.
Pardon me? Yeah.
I think even the fact, the, for your sums alone that long, but it's increased over years. So.
Right.
Motivation, making that whole.
Correct. Cool. Wonderful. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for? Mr. Rushkin? If not, I'd like to thank you for your report. I'd like to move on to 5.3, administration reports presented by Linda Cloney.
Thank you. So I'll start with the admin assistant report and then I'm going to pass it over to Ruth Ann Brooke and she's going to do the manager finance reports. We'll do it all together here. That's okay with you there. So, so the admin reports, I just want to announce that we, a fair bit of water billing. It takes a lot of work to conduct those water bills, a lot of reads and putting them in the computers and then working things out. So actually they're still in process of that. So it's been going together. Also, there's been a lot of posting on messaging on different grants being uploaded. Our proclamation's been organized and posted as well. So there's a lot of work on that. Also assisting with the election sum here as well, including some sharing of posts on social media and the websites and website calendar as well. So there's a lot of work. And just to remind everyone, tomorrow is the advanced poll, 12 o'clock. It all opens. You got your voter cards or come visit us at the fire hall tomorrow for paper voting. So anyways, it starts tomorrow. Just put a little plug in there. Also, there was a fair bit of vacations that we had to fill in for. So staff had a multitask in between two different locations. So a lot of press, press work as well. So that's our admin report. The full reports on our website as well under the council package and included there as well. So this few highlights and I'll pass that over to Ruth Ann for our finance.
The exciting reports. Okay, so I did shorten them off a little. I felt better to have an overall. We've gone through about 50% of our year now. So that's from April to the end of September. And this is, this much has been posted. There might be a few straggling invoices here and there, but gives you a general idea of how we're doing. Now, if you're looking at the general operating fund, that excludes water. The revenues of both tax bills have been. The interim and the final haven't been put out and the due date was September 30th. So on this report, it assumes everybody paid their taxes. There will be an allowance at the end of the year that compensates for stuff that's still unreceivable. So it's not shown on, in the revenue portion. That's shown in the expense portion. But to date, we have about 91% of our revenues for the year end. And the the ones that aren't in the grants and lieu and other services of fire protection and whatnot, that, that comes later in the year. And I had to have the financials from last year in order to apply for the lieu. So that, that will come next couple of months, no problem. So the expenditures, I just did it by department. And basically look down through there and I gave you a percentage of what's already invoiced. And most of them are around the 50% mark. Anywhere between 45 and, and 53%. So as a grand total, right now we have 47% of our expenditures in, which this time last year was a little lower, might've been 45%. So I feel we're doing good with our spending. I, I did do a little pro rate there at the bottom adjustments just because the insurance bill comes in once a year and I prorate it for six months because it is a fairly hefty bill of 77,000 a year. So if you take 38,000 of that and then you also include the wages that we're missing for September that aren't paid until October, then it does bring it down to 46%, but it's not much. 46 is, is a good amount of field of water operating fund of. Also, we're, we're around the 45% mark for expenditures there. We're staying on par as to what our budget was, was mandated to do. So I'm happy with that. I prorated some of the things in there to, to make it spread out over the years. So the revenues are only 25%, but that, that will increase once this next bill goes out because we only have one quarter worth of bills in there for this year so far. So the 25% isn't bad. It's a little lower than last year, but it, it will. So does anybody have any questions about those two? Now, the other budget that we have approved every year is a capital budget. And it does change depending on what emergency fixes you have to do. And so you do have to juggle that around a little. I, I did mark in the gray areas what was approved in budget. And actual to date, some of these projects are not completed yet. So that will go up some. We did change the MFC debt. We're going to pay instead of a million dollars, we could borrow up to a million. We're going to borrow 900,000 if that's acceptable with everyone. The other 100,000, you have to have projects completed before you borrow the money. So the fire truck, we, we'd either have to wait to the spring adventure to buy it or buy it now. And right now the cash flow is in the better stead to buy something and evolve. And it is in the spring. So I, I feel that would probably be the smartest move. And we do have the money in reserves to cover the 100,000 for the, for the public works. It was great that the fire association came up with 100,000. We were trying to, at the first, we were trying to get, you know, more money. I think it was 250,000 in grants towards the truck. But we thought some of that might come from the county, but we're still in negotiations with the county. And as Bruce just said, that one fire truck's on, has been on its last legs. So to try to wait, yeah, would, would be difficult. So that was one of the changes in here that you might note. But everything else is going as planned. The Founder's Street is coming in as budget. Well, lower than budget. We thought it was going to be a lot more. So, so that was definitely a saving grace on our water capital, which is really struggling right now because we've had a lot of unexpected expenses with our wells and mandates with environment. And so I was kind of happy that Founder's Street came in under so that our water capital can, can get built up. So does anybody have any questions about that?
Well, if there's no questions, I'd like to thank you, Linda and Dan, for that report. I'd like to move on to 5.4, recreation presented by Counselor McNutt.
Okay, so we've been actually quite busy the last little bit. So to celebrate the fall festival, the Oxford Recreation Commission is inviting the local businesses and residents to participate in a scarecrow display contest. We would love to see your scarecrows outside or inside your business. The best scarecrows will be recognized. Once your scarecrow is displayed, be sure to share a picture using hashtag Oxford NS scarecrows. You can email me or send a message to Melissa Ellis. She's also on our recreation commission. Displays must be up by Friday, October 25th. We're having a Halloween costume swap. So you can drop off gently used costumes. If you're going through your kids' costumes, you know, you, they're grown out of them or you don't want them anymore, please drop them off to Town Hall anytime during business hours. So we need lots of costumes to make this event a success. And then you can come to the fire hall on Wednesday, October 16th from six to seven, and you can pick out a free Halloween costume. So we'll also be holding two adult craft nights in November. One is on November 6th. They're both at six o'clock. November 6th at the fire hall, we'll be making fancy wooden charcuterie boards with Vicky Gillis and Michael Warham. The cost is $70. And on Tuesday, November 19th, also at six, we're going to the fire hall and we're having an old fashioned paint night with Ashley Hudson. So the cost of that one is $35. You'll need to pre-register with me, email or through Messenger. All four of those things are currently on Facebook. So they're on our recreation commission and I also shared them to the town, the other two town sites. So I'm sure you can find them if you want any more information. And I know it seems early, but we are starting the Christmas parade planning. I just got notification today that the pipe and ban people are coming. So that's good news. It will be the last Friday in November, which is November 29th, 6:30. And this year's theme will be favorite Christmas songs. So watch the Recreation Commission Facebook page and we'll put the updates and we'll be very soon looking for floats and things like that. And that's all I got.
You ready to get any questions?
Has a permit been applied for? Just like that.
Well, it's in process. It's in process. Yes, there's a little bit of discrepancy whether we actually need it or not.
Oh, really?
So I was, Linda was told we were, and then I was told we weren't by Department Transportation, which is ironically where I work. I just walked over next door and they said, no, you don't need that. It's within town lines. But Linda was told that we did. So we're going to look into it a little bit further, but the answer to your question is yes. One of them.
Are there any other questions? If not, thank, thank you very much for your report, Counselor McNutt. I'd like to move on. There's no correspondence?
Oh, just above that one. Sorry. Yeah, 6.1.
6.1. Okay, Cumberland Public Library Committee report.
No, that's all good. It's, I kind of had it tucked up there. Sorry about that. So we did get a couple, Cumberland Public Libraries report. So just it, again, it's included in the package. It's online there for anyone that would like to read, but I'll give you a few highlights from it. And Counselor Black, if she wants to chime in too, she's in the know on all this too. So Summer Reading Club of 2024, they had over 280 kids register for the club and submitted a total of 5,253 ballots towards some prizes. Some of the prizes that were included for the kids for, for their reading was a hundred dollar, $100 and also two $25 gift cards at each locations for kids. Also, there was teens, our teenagers had submitted over 1,800 ballots. And so prizes for them included things like AirPods and an Udi. Not sure what an Udi is, but a nudie. And also adults entered over 900 ballots to win prizes. So there's been a lot of reading going on. So there we go. Also, there's a really neat giveaway for women. It's called a period underwear giveaway. So for those, just letting you know that it's going around tour on Cumberland County starting October 3rd in Parsborough. So the Oxford program will take place in November, but they'll be giving away a free pair of reusable period underwear. So just, just wanted to put that out. It's a new program and it, yeah, it's definitely a need, I'm sure. Statistics in the month of July, Cumberland Public Library signed out over 15,000 items. 1,000 of those items came from Oxford alone.
Wow.
This include books, movies, TV shows, magazines, ebooks and more. This include books, movies, TV shows, magazines, ebooks and more. Also in July, Oxford held four in-person programs with thirty-seven people in attendance, so the Oxford library had four hundred and eighteen people coming in to visit. Uh, there's, uh, they're undergoing the provincial funding review, uh, there is a brief update on there as well. Uh, the next board meeting's gonna be November nineteenth, and I'm sure Council Black will be there. Uh, and also, I just wanted to note, after this report was submitted, um, I received a call from, uh, our chief librarian Denise, and, uh, one of our staff members, um, had to step away for, for illness reasons. And, uh, so there's gonna be some, uh, we're due to staff shortages, she does the Oxford library, there's gonna be a couple of dates where uh, she, we will be closed just for that reason, it's not to be learned, we're not closing the Oxford library or anything like that, it's just staff shortage. Uh, I believe it's gonna be a couple of Saturdays coming up in the near future, do you have an idea how they're gonna publicize that, or?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they have their dates, they're working really hard to
To fill it.
To fill all our spots, but there might be two Saturdays, but they will be posting it, and I don't have the Saturdays yet.
If you follow the Cumberland Library on Facebook, they always post, like, just today, for whatever reason, our library's closing at six instead of eight, so I noticed that on Facebook today. And also you could maybe call ahead if you wanna check in to see if they're open as well, so. That's my report.
I thank you Linda for your report, now move on to number seven, which there is no correspondence. So I'm gonna adjourn the meeting and turn it over to Mayor Henley for a special meeting.
Good, thank you. Okay, before I begin, before I begin, just a couple of things, uh, this is probably going to be the last council meeting for this particular council. I'd like to say thank you to all the councillors for all the hard work you've put in over the past year, I really appreciate it, I'm sure Linda does as well.
Yes, very.
Also, before I go any further, I would like to present this certificate of recognition to Councilor Paul Jones in recognition of fifteen years of dedicated service to municipal government in the province of Nova Scotia.
But, uh, just to add to that, that came from N S F M, you know, that recognition.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order, first off, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilor Jones, second by Deputy Mayor McDonald, well, those in favor, please say aye. Motion carried. Business, three point one, pre-approval of the venture issuance for the fire truck. Uh, that's going to you.
Uh, I'll give a briefing, I'm gonna pass it right over to Ruth Ann here in a minute, uh, so this here adventure is a two-step process, if you recall September eleventh, at our last council meeting, uh, there was, um, we did pass the motion to to be able to apply for, um, for this adventure, or to, to get a loan, so now this is the second step, and so Ruth Ann is gonna take it from here to proceed.
So this, this step just is the final, um, application that you put into M F C for the loan. They all have to be in in October thirtieth. Uh, as you read through this, um, maybe you learn, they say the interest rate of the adventure does not exceed the rate of six point five percent, I don't want to be alarmed with that, I did question M F C about that. And also called Scotiabank to compare, uh, uh, that is a ceiling that they have, the six point five percent. So you don't have to go through the whole process again, in case the interest rate goes that high. Just to let you know, spring dementia came in at four point seven percent with M F C, so they're not expecting it to be six point five, so just um, and, uh, when I talked to, uh, Scotiabank, they said municipalities most times don't, don't come to them for loans because they cannot match the rate with M F C, and they did recently have uh, uh, a municipality close to here apply, and they still ended up going with M F C, so. Uh, and the, you know, he could just give me a ballpark with an application put in, but so, if you wanna go ahead and apply through M F C, that, and as well with the bank, the interest rate would only be in locked in for five years, and I've seen they give you the interest rate for ten years, the, over the entire adventure time, so the adventure would be for ten years, and the term loan would be for ten years, and it would be for nine hundred thousand. And the interest rate, we will not know for sure until after everybody is applied October thirtieth, and they know how much money they have to buy the ventures with, so then they come back with that, with the rate. Uh, so, that's
I have a question about the interest rate then, so, do those interest rates sometimes, like, are they as low as, like, where pre-COVID mortgage rates were?
Oh, they're probably still gonna be around four point seven.
Okay.
I mean, the bank can, they did lower the rate this summer.
Right.
So, I'm
That's what I wondered about.
Lower, but.
Should we lock it in for the ten years if it may lower?
They, they'll, they'll give you the schedule, and it will be for the
Right, and you don't think that if we went somewhere else, it could get lower as the interest rates go lower?
Not after I talked to
Right.
To Scotiabank, I, I did actually make that call to find that out, but we are so small, that when you consider all the municipalities, put all their bit, debentures together, and then they go buy the, the venture at an interest rate a lot lower than what one individual municipality could buy, so, that's why they, they're set up to loan to municipalities. So, uh, that, um, yeah, so if these two are passed, then we'll, we'll have the money to buy the truck, and, uh,
Yeah, the brand new.
All right, so I think I speak now.
So if you made a motion.
I have a motion to make, and it's a long one, so sit tight. Whereas clause sixty-six one of the municipal act, the act provides that a municipality may borrow to carry out an authority to expend funds for capital purposes conferred by the act or another act of the legislature. And whereas clause nine one one A of the act provides that where a municipality is authorized to borrow money subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, that the sum shall be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures in one sum or by installments as determined by the council. And whereas clause nine one one B of the municipal government act authorizes the council to determine the amount and term of and the rate of interest on each debenture, when the interest on a debenture is to be paid, and where the principal and interest on a debenture, debenture are to be paid. And whereas clause ninety-one two of the municipal act, municipal government act states, that in accordance with the Finance Act, the mayor or warden and clerk or the person designated by the council by policy shall sell and deliver the debentures on behalf of municipality at the price, in the sums and in the manner deemed proper. And whereas the resolution of council to borrow for was approved by the municipal council on September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, be it therefore resolved that under the authority of section ninety-one of the municipal government act, the town of Oxford borrow by the issue and sale of debentures of some or sums not exceeding nine hundred thousand dollars for a period not to extend ten years, subject to the approval of the minister, that the sum be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures of the town of Oxford in the amount that the mayor or warden and clerk or the person designated by the council deems proper, provided the average interest rate of the debenture does not exceed the rate of six point five percent, that the depend, that the debenture be arranged with the province of Nova Scotia with interest to be paid semi-annually and principal payments made annually, that this resolution remains in force for a period not exceeding twelve months from the passing of this resolution.
We have a motion, do we have a second or? Okay, second by Councilor Canning, okay, you've all heard the motion, is there any questions? Not hearing any questions, I'll call for a vote, all those in the fav- in favor of the motion as presented by Councilor McNutt, please raise a hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you, thank you, and thank you Ruth Ann. Next up, three point two, update on water cad process.
So, um, thank you, we're shut out, so this is gonna just be brief, but I wanted to let everyone know, because we had a presentation on the Water Cat study where there was a cost, and we weren't sure of the cost where, if the town would be required, or if this would be, uh, somewhere else, we had reached out uh, to the utility review board, and we have been in touch with, um, the, uh, the other municipalities as well, and it looks like it, it's a cost towards the developer side. We just need to formalize the best way in council to approve which way, uh, how we implement this cost, so it is not a, it's not gonna affect our water rates or anything like that, it's not gonna affect the taxpayers, but those that are interested in connecting into our water. So, because we have a water distribution plan to keep that plan up to date, we know where our water's being distributed. Um, but this is a process, we're trying to nail it.
Okay, and you're just, that's just a report.
That's just an update, so to ease some minds, people are wondering, so I just wanted to give an update.
So when do we think that we can move ahead with this, what are?
As soon as possible, yeah.
Because we have a few
We have few people waiting, it's holding up, so.
This will be public works that decides this and bringing back the council, is that?
Uh, right now, we're working with our developers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you, any other questions for Linda regarding this matter? No, okay, next up, we have an in-camera session, so those of you at home that are familiar with this know that we'll be shutting off the camera and coming back to it, uh, first off, I need a motion to win camera, please.
Second.
Okay, I didn't see who moved it. No, moved by Councilor McNutt, seconded by Councilor Jones, we're going in camera, the time is six forty.